Thanks everyone for coming tonight. Excuse me, we're ready to start. Before I turn this in, is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight that has not had the opportunity to sign up? All right, great, all right. Court order, the Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, February 24th. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Sternbaugh.
Here.
Dr. Graff.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Have a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having some guests, and honored guests. And we'll start with the introductions. Megan, would you like to... Amanda, would you like to...
Senator Blackshear Jr. is currently serving his first term as state senator. He previously served two terms at state representative for District 39, then 38, prior to becoming a state senator. A lifelong Ohioan, he is a graduate of Wright State University and is currently pursuing his MBA at the Ohio State University. Go Buckeyes! He is currently serving on four committees, one of which is the Workforce Development Committee. We are so excited that he has taken time out of his busy schedule to come here today and say a few words.
Senator Blackshear?
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Once again, Willis Blackshear Jr., newly elected to the state senate, I represent District 6. I want to just thank you, Mrs. Megan Sparks, for the invitation. Glad we made the connection. So, as soon as I got elected, I sent letters to school board members, council members, superintendents, I mean, the list goes on and on. And I personally signed the letter as well, so my hand was a little tired for a few days. But, thank you so much for having me. Glad to be here, just to introduce myself. Like you said, prior to me being in the senate, I was in the house for two terms, four years. So, I represented 39th House District, which was the city of Dayton, Jefferson Township. And then, due to redistricting, it was the 38th House District, which was the city of Dayton, Riverside, and parts of Huber Heights. So, the joke is, is that since being in office, I have not represented the same district consecutively. So, hopefully, that can change. So, just a few of my priorities: education, economic and workforce development, and housing. And they all go hand in hand. We want to make sure that we are equipping our kids, our schools, our teachers with the tools so our kids can succeed. We want to make sure that our kids have the jobs here in the area. And then, obviously, we all need a place to live, so making sure that they all have nice, safe, and clean communities that they stay in. I live by the saying, "Cradle to career." We need to make sure, as a legislature, that we are giving our schools the resources, the tools, for them to be successful. We definitely have a lot of work we have to do. One, in terms of the school funding model. But then also, two, our school voucher system, where a billion dollars is being given to private and charter schools, dollars that are being taken away from our public schools. I don't know about you, but while I was on the campaign trail, of course, there was a school levy on the ballot. And I heard from a lot of the residents who were frustrated in terms of another levy being on the ballot. And I don't believe that none of our school districts should have to rely on a levy to be properly funded. I've had conversations with multiple superintendents from different school districts, a lot of different members from different school boards. And it's frustrating. It's frustrating where you have schools who have to make, what I like to say, unnecessary cuts, because they shouldn't have to make these cuts. But then, the cuts that they have to make, now, we are putting the burden on our administrators, on our staff, and ultimately, on our students, which leads to burnout. Which leads to burnout. So, we need to get to the root of this issue, and we need to fix it. I work for you all. And this is all about a partnership. I know there will be good days and there will be bad days, but I want you all to know that I'm here to listen, take a lot of the things, all of the things that I hear, and take that to the state house and continue to be an advocate for you all. This isn't a one-off thing. I promise you that I will be here on a consistent basis. I have an open-door policy, where you can come see me, whether in my in-district office, or in Columbus, or I can meet you where you are. And that's what it's all about, me and you where you are, because I work for the taxpayer. So, I'm an accessible person. So, if you have any questions, concerns, comments, if you just want somebody who you want to yell at, I'm here for that. So, thank you all, once again, for having me.
Thank you. Senator Blackshear, it's a pleasure having you here. We don't often get people that will accept our invitations anymore. And it's a pleasure to have someone who's a supporter of public education and is concerned about the funding and the voucher system here. So, thank you again. Dan?
Thank you, Dr. Rohr. This is my favorite board meeting of the year. It's a big night for the Human Resources Office. We give opportunity to celebrate our Teacher of the Year nominee. But tonight, it's even more special, because we're welcoming two new members of our administrative team. So, really appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board this evening and our community with these honors. So, I'm going to start with the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Our Ohio Teacher of the Year nominee program. Each year, the district participates in this program, which is sponsored by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. The mission of the Ohio Teacher of the Year program is to honor, promote, and recognize excellence in teaching and in the teaching field. This year, the district nominee was selected from Primary Village North, which has a very large contingent here tonight, so supporting their person. I'm very pleased to announce that the district has selected Mrs. Sarah Jacobs for this very prestigious recognition. So, Sarah, would you please come forward? Sarah is a first-grade teacher at PVN, and she's worked for the district for the past 23 years. She's a proud undergrad from Muskingham University, and she has later earned her master's degree from the University of Dayton in literacy. Sarah has spent her entire professional teaching career here in Centerville. Prior to teaching at PVN, Mrs. Jacobs spent five years at Normandy Elementary School, where she also taught first grade. Sarah's nominator is Mrs. Mindy Klein. I'll ask Mrs. Klein to step forward, please. Mrs. Klein will be making a few comments here about Sarah in just a few minutes. But before she makes her comments, our communications specialist, Mrs. Sarah Swan, has prepared a brief video, which features both Sarah and Mrs. Klein introducing themselves and speaking a little bit more about tonight's program. So, we could go ahead and show the video?
I have been teaching first grade for 23 years, all in Centerville. I started my teaching career at Normandy Elementary, where I taught for five years. And I've been at PVN for the last 18 years, all in first grade. I love being able to help the children grow. And of course, I strive for academic growth, but also, they grow in so many ways throughout the year, like with their problem-solving skills and their confidence and their social skills with other kids. And we try to celebrate those small successes throughout the year. So, when a shy student gets up to share their book for writer's workshop, and they share in front of the class, we celebrate that. Or when a group of students can solve a problem without me having to work that out with them, we celebrate those little successes. And I feel like every year, you know, we get new children, we get new families, new challenges to try to best meet their needs. But being able to build those relationships with kids and families and being able to help create that strong foundation for learning is very important. And I think the biggest thing is just teaching kids the love for learning. So, at this age, they already have a natural curiosity and wonder about the world. Like, they get really excited when we have a new bird come to our window at the bird feeder, or we've had a groundhog visit. And it's just fun to see them light up. And sometimes, that sparks a new research project that we do as a class. So, just seeing the world through six- and seven-year-olds' eyes, it's inspiring and exciting.
Hi, I'm Mindy Klein, and I'm the principal here at Primary Village North. And I have had the distinct pleasure to work with Sarah Jacobs as a first-grade teacher here at PVN for the last 18 years. She is one of the very most dedicated professionals I've ever had the opportunity to work with. Every decision that Sarah makes is about kids and about their families. It's always a pleasure to visit Sarah's classroom. She plans such exciting and engaging lessons. When I walk in, it is just fabulous to see the joy of student learning on all of the kids' faces. Mrs. Jacobs' impact will long be felt in the field of education as she continually commits to mentoring high school students, student teachers, and teachers new to Centerville Schools. Sarah inspires educators and everyone around her by encouraging them to think deeper, dig deeper, and believe in our work as educators. We could not be more thrilled to nominate Sarah Jacobs as Ohio Teacher of the Year. I am confident that she is among one of Ohio's finest educators. Who better to help us celebrate and promote excellence in teaching and learning? Congratulations, Sarah. We are very proud of you.
Great job, Mrs. Klein. Great job, Mrs. Klein. I'd like to thank Sarah for putting together that video. I think it's also be available on our website, if you want to go back and re-watch it. Mrs. Jacobs is an outstanding and accomplished teacher. She excels in her classroom with her students. She excels in the building with her professional peers in every aspect. She truly embraces our district's strategic plan and mission of empowering, challenging, and supporting every learner every day. Mrs. Jacobs possesses a highly positive can-do attitude, and she understands that there are no days off when implementing our strategic plan. Evidence for this can be seen, in part, with her empathetic and student-centered approach with the instructional process. She is simply a very caring person who genuinely respects and attends to each of her students in a very personalized and individualized manner. I asked Sarah for a quote for this presentation tonight, and this is what she said to me. She says, quote, "When I started at PVN, I taught kids in inclusion, on IEPs, including behavior IEPs. I feel I have been successful supporting my students' needs. I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to learn from many amazing educators over the years." And there's a bunch of them sitting right back there. So, I appreciate them being here in support of Sarah. Sarah, so it's a real honor this evening to recognize you. And so, at this time, I'm going to let your boss and your nominator say just a few more things.
PVN is extremely proud to present Mrs. Sarah Jacobs as Centerville City Schools' representative for the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Sarah is one of the most dedicated, dynamic, and amazing teachers I have ever had the pleasure to work with. Sarah is a master at developing very strong relationships with children, which inspires them to be their very best and to do their very best. Sarah is invested in her students even outside of her classroom. A former parent states, "My family was so fortunate to have Mrs. Jacobs as an integral part of our daughter's life spanning seven years." Mrs. Jacobs has supported our girls both within and beyond the classroom. This demonstrates that Mrs. Jacobs is truly invested in developing her students in a holistic sense and celebrates their passions and successes even beyond the walls of her physical classroom. Mrs. Jacobs is also to be commended for her connections with parents and families. A former parent writes, "Mrs. Jacobs taught two of my daughters in first grade and mentored my oldest daughter through the High School Early Childhood Education Program. The one word that comes to mind when I think about her influence on my girls is love. She is a remarkable educator and a blessing to her students." Approximately 10 years ago, our work, our school began working with students with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges. I asked Sarah to consider having these students in her classroom. She has never once looked back. She has welcomed these children, their families, and all the specialists associated. We simply call her "The Child Whisperer." She builds relationships and rapport with the children that have some of the biggest behaviors you can imagine when they first enter her classroom. She believes in them unconditionally until they believe in themselves. I have witnessed children that I did not believe could participate in regular education classrooms make fabulous academic and social progress, working alongside Sarah. Our school counselor said, "Sarah has an amazing ability to connect with some of our most challenging students. She is able to work her magic on students that others feel at a loss to help." Sarah's work is just difficult to explain. It's hard, it can be a little ugly, it is magic, and it is always beautiful. I am very proud to introduce Mrs. Sarah Jacobs as Centerville City Schools' Teacher of the Year.
That's hard to hear all of that. First of all, I'm just deeply grateful and honored to be recognized for Teacher of the Year, representing Centerville City Schools. When Mrs. Klein was, we were in the Drama Center, and she was reading that letter, I was thinking of other people until I realized she was talking about myself. And it's truly humbling, because I am surrounded by amazing educators and dedicated staff members every day, as you can see here. I'd like to thank Centerville City Schools for taking a chance on me 23 years ago. I was fresh out of college and just so excited to begin my teaching career, especially in Centerville. Thank you to the administrators and central office staff for providing continuous support and quality professional development. I love that year after year, I can continue to grow as an educator. Thank you, Mindy, for being a dedicated leader and for creating a positive learning environment at PVN, where both students and teachers can thrive. I've been blessed to work with an abundance of amazing educators and aides from throughout the district, many who are here tonight. These teachers have helped shape me into the teacher that I am today. With each team that I've been on, teachers are willing to collaborate and problem-solve, share successes, and listen when it's been a hard day, because we have those too. Teaching would be so much harder without the support of my fellow teachers and coworkers. Thank you to the student teachers and ECE students who I've worked with throughout the years. They always teach me to reflect and examine my teaching practices so I can explain my why and why we do the things that we do, which has strengthened me as a teacher. Mentoring new teachers or student teachers brings excitement to the classroom, and it reignites a passion for learning. They always make me feel young until I find out the year they were born. My student teacher was born in 2003, just let that sink in. And I can't forget my students, because they are the reason that I come to school each day. Over the years, many students have inspired me to keep my enthusiasm for teaching. Students have also challenged me to find new teaching strategies and to get creative with problem-solving when something isn't working. They renew me with their stories of lost teeth, moments when the light bulb comes on, and their curiosity and wonder for the world around them. And finally, I just want to thank my family who came tonight. They're always here to support me, whether it's listening to stories from school or waiting while I message one more parent on Parent Square. So, I just want to thank them for coming tonight. And once again, I just want to thank you for this recognition. I'm proud to be part of this Centerville Schools' community and proud to be part of the herd. Who else?
Sarah's credentials will be reviewed by a state selection panel. They choose one outstanding educator out of the whole state of Ohio, and she is definitely in the mix. And so, we'll be working with her, preparing that application. And so, I just, once again, want to just say, congratulations, Sarah. You make us all look good. Thank you. I could maybe ask Mr. Kogle to answer that question. I think he's a Muskingham grad, so... Actually, Muskingham does participate in the Ohio University Career Fair. So, I'm, 23 years was before my time here in HR, so that's probably right around Dr. Henderson's time. So, I'm going to give him probably credit for the hire, so... Yes, 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 thank you. I believe I still have the floor. So, next, we would like to introduce our newest administrators to the district. So, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce to the board and the community. It's kind of ironic that we have a bunch of PVN staff here, and Sarah's being recognized, and we get to introduce, I get to have the pleasure of introducing their new principal, Mrs. Christina French, and also John Hole's new principal, Mr. Matt Sazda. So, very bittersweet. Mindy, thank you for being here, and it's kind of neat that you had the opportunity to do this. And it's super cool that Christina gets to be here tonight as well and has the opportunity to be introduced. So, just a little bit of background. We posted these positions very on, very early on, as a result of retirements. And so, we moved very quickly on the selection process, and we did that very intentionally to ensure a high level of quality in the applicant pool that we had to choose from. And so, I can say with a lot of confidence that we achieved that desired result of quality with the selections of Mrs. French and Mr. Sazda from an applicant pool that numbered 48. Our selection process was vigorous and very comprehensive. Just ask the two of them, they'll tell you. And it included significant input from all stakeholders. So, Mrs. French, if you would come forward, please. As part of my introduction of Mrs. French tonight, I would like to read to you some of her profile that she shared with the selection committees. So, Christina writes, "The last 14 years of my career have been focused on leading staff, students, parents, and building a community focused on academics and strong relationships. It includes a well-rounded leadership profile that includes school leadership, curriculum and instruction development, and classroom teaching. The awards along the way in each of these areas, including the Golden Apple Award, the Momentum Award, and Community Partnership Awards, are representative of my passion and dedication to public school instruction and leadership. I have chosen to continue my career in the field of school leadership as I feel that it's where I'm most influential and most devoted." So, that's very, very well said. Thank you. Mrs. French is a graduate of Bowling Green State University. She received her master's degree from Xavier University. She is currently a member of the Lakota Local School District Board of Education, where she has served since 2024. Mrs. French started her career in education as a first-grade teacher in the Fairfield City School District. She spent seven years in that role before accepting the position of Assistant Principal at East Elementary School in the Fairfield City School District. In 2012, Christina accepted the position of Principal at Hopewell Elementary School with a Lakota Local School District. She held that position for six years until she became the Director of K6 Curriculum and Instruction for the Lakota Schools. She served in that capacity for five years before joining the Lakota Board of Education. Mrs. French brings an absolute wealth of knowledge and expertise to the Centerville City Schools, and I am very excited to present her to you at this time.
Thank you so much for having me. I don't know how you follow up a Teacher of the Year presentation with a new principal. I feel like the meeting should just stop after that's announced, right? So, congratulations, Sarah. And what an honor to be here with the staff from Primary Village North. I am beyond humbled to become a member of the Centerville City School District family. The process was rigorous, but I can say that along the way, I learned so many wonderful things about this district and about Primary Village North specifically. And I'm very excited to join that staff and join the team. And congratulations to Mindy on her retirement. And from what I understand, from everyone I have spoken to, I can only hope to be as wonderful of a leader as she has been. And I'm excited to be here. So, thank you for having me, and thank you for believing in me.
Congratulations, Christina. Mr. Sazda, would you please come forward? Like Christina's introduction, I would like to share a little bit of Matt's profile that he shared with the selection committees. Matt writes, "As a school leader, my philosophy on education is closely aligned with Centerville City Schools' mission and strategic plan. My record shows a commitment to the growth of innovative structures within the Centerville City Schools through my collaborations with local organizations, including the University of Dayton, the Columbus Museum of Art, and the Harvard Graduate School Project Zero. I have also shown my commitment to the district through my participation in school and district teams and initiatives. My experiences have allowed me to lead professional learning communities while continuing my teaching career at the primary level." Very well stated, Mr. Sazda. Matt is a graduate of the University of Dayton, where he earned his bachelor's degree. He earned his master's degree from the American College of Education. He currently teaches at, he currently teaches art at Klein Elementary School, where he also serves as the principal designate, which he serves in that capacity when Principal Mrs. Barker is absent. Mr. Sazda has also spent his entire professional career here in Centerville, since his initial hire in 2011. Matt started his career with us teaching at Primary Village South in that 2011-2012 school year. He also provided art instruction at our School of Possibility from 2011 to 2014. Before accepting his current position as Klein Elementary Art Teacher, Matt actually taught art part-time at John Hole Elementary during the 2013-14 school year. In August of 2014, Mr. Sazda accepted a full-time position teaching art at Klein Elementary School. During his tenure here in Centerville, Matt has earned several special recognitions, including the Centerville City Schools' Teacher of the Year Award, as we just recognized Sarah in 2020, the Centerville Noon Optimist Bringing Out the Best in Kids Award in 2019, and the Leaders in Creativity Fellowship for the Columbus Art Museum in 2017, 18, and 19. Matt brings a unique skill set and some extraordinary creativity back to John Hole. And so, I'm very pleased to present to you, at this time, Mr. Matt Sazda.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, so I got to do the whole Teacher of the Year thing five years ago. So, Mrs. Jacobs, five years from now, you know, I don't know, principal roles will be open, but, you know, if you don't have the license, now's the time. I want to thank everybody for being here, the board for your support, and all the John Hole staff and central office staff as well, for believing in me, for having the confidence that I can get the job done. I've spent 14 years in Centerville, and, you know, I can't help but be thankful for the support that everybody has always given me. In 2019, I was awarded a fellowship in Michigan called the Gilchrist Residency, where teachers are allowed to go into the woods in a cabin by themselves, disconnected, for seven days. And I came out of the woods, and I decided the next step for me is principal. So, you know, it sometimes takes something big, but I've realized that the small moments that lead up into that decision are really what matters. So, since then, I've been working towards this moment, and I'm incredibly grateful to have the opportunity. And while in the woods, I read a beautiful poem called "Landscape" by Buddy Wakefield. And in the poem, he's talking about decisions, and the main advice he gives is "true of heart and best foot forward." And I really hope to bring that into John Hole as we move on to our next chapter. So, thank you, everybody. I'm grateful, and I appreciate your time.
Congratulations, Mr. Sazda. Just for your information, we are currently working on transition plans for both Christina and Matt. They're already getting acclimated to their new buildings, their new staff, their new responsibilities. So, they're already busy at work. And so, the last thing that I would like to say this evening, I did want to thank all of those, there are some members of our selection committees who are here tonight. Obviously, the administrative team is here. They put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. And the result of that hard work was the hiring of these two outstanding new administrators, members, newest members of our team. So, I really appreciate that, and appreciate the opportunity to having been able to introduce them to you this evening.
Thank you, Dan. Again, thanks for everyone coming, and we're out of time now. So, no, I'm just kidding.
So, no, I'm just kidding. All right, next on the agenda is public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance, of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The presiding officer, which is me, of each board meeting at which public participation is permitted, shall administer the following rules. The portion of the meeting for participation of public, of the public shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register their intention to participate. Individuals may not register others to speak, and no participant may speak more than once. Participants must first be recognized and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, and whether they are a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement by the participant shall be limited to three minutes or less. The board will listen to all to speak, but generally do not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. First speaker, Amy.
You got the clock? There it is.
Good evening. My name is Amy Fogel. I am a resident. My husband and I are Centerville alum, and we have three children in Centerville City Schools. I'm here tonight to request the district join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. People often ask, how does Centerville benefit from joining? Isn't Centerville on a guarantee? And how do vouchers negatively affect Centerville? My hope is for our community to broaden our perspective, think collectively rather than individually, and analyze the whole system. The legislature has recently told us that current public school funding is a fantasy. They have no obligation to fulfill a bipartisan effort to address longstanding unconstitutional school funding. The governor addressed the biennial budget that calls for reducing public school guarantee. And Speaker Huffman has proposed a $650 million cut to public education. Ohio now ranks 45th out of 50 in the percentage of public school funds coming from the state. We ranked 35th just 20 years ago. This didn't happen overnight. The 20-year trend and growing political strategy has been simple, to disrupt and defend public education. Laws enacted from our state for nearly a generation have shown us over and over again what they value, and it is not the 8,000-plus students that attend public school here in Centerville, but rather the 10% that attend private overwhelmingly religious schools. The final nail in the coffin is now unchecked, unlimited use of taxpayer money to fund private schools while simultaneously stripping funds from public schools. Is this not our line in the sand? How can all of this not impact Centerville? Out of the hundreds of districts that have signed on to support the lawsuit, none have had any assurances on to how, when, or if they will benefit. But despite uncertainties, they recognize this approach as their most viable option to challenge existing power structures in the State House, halt the transfer of public funds to private schools, and push back against the unrelenting pressure on our public education framework. When advocating for new legislation, lawmakers always want to know, what's your pay-for? Meaning, how are you going to pay for it? Are you taking part from budget, or are you raising taxes? If our community wants to improve school funding, make levies last longer, and continue to grow and thrive opposed to simply surviving, I've got a pretty good idea where the pay-for is. It's a billion dollars in growing, and you don't have to raise taxes. Please draw a line in the sand and say enough is enough. Protect publication, public education for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you, could you name and?
I, I'm going to.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. I'm Lisa Butel, and I reside in Washington Township. I currently have a student here at Centerville High School and two recent graduates of Centerville High School. I'd like to ask for your consideration to join the hundreds of public school districts in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. Why? Because the Ohio Constitution stipulates that the state must ensure proper funding of public schools. And religious groups do not have the right to these state school funds. Using state tax dollars for private religious education does not honor the separation of church and state. According to the Washington Post, 91% of voucher recipients attend private religious schools. According to the Ohio Education Policy Institute, 96% of vouchers go to students who are currently enrolled in private schools already. Ohio Speaker Matt Huffman has stated that public education funding in Ohio is just not sustainable. Well, it's not sustainable if you're taking a billion dollars just this last year alone and pouring it into private education rather than public. With voucher expansion, families with household income of up to $135,000 can now receive $6,000 for their student in K-8, and over $8,000 for a student in 9-12. Even the wealthiest families are eligible to receive some sort of voucher assistance. In comparison, the state only gives Centerville City Schools about $3,000 per student, including homestead exemptions and rollbacks. There is no valid reason why the state should be giving two to three times more per pupil to subsidize private education over public education. Speaker Huffman has said they plan to increase funding for vouchers, all while public schools are forced to return to the community for money, thereby increasing your property taxes. As you know, 90% of Ohio students attend public schools, schools which welcome all students regardless of race, religion, special needs, or economic status. Private schools, however, can be selective as to whom they admit. Public schools, such as ours, are subjected to educational mandates from the state, including tests, report cards, curricula, and budget reviews. Private schools have zero accountability to the state. Please, I would like for you to take a stand for public education in Ohio for the overwhelming majority of students and join this lawsuit. Maybe then the legislators would be forced to put vouchers on the ballot to actually be voted by the people of this state, because no voucher bill has ever passed when it's been put to a public vote. Take a stand with this lawsuit is one of many ways that our district can take a stand and support fair funding for public education. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Kerr. I live in Washington Township, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here to add my voice to those urging Centerville schools to join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. My family moved to Dayton from Atlanta, Georgia in 1998, relocating from my husband's job when our children were only eight and five. We chose to buy a house in Centerville because of the excellent school district. The size of the school district allows for many opportunities, and our children thrived. We do not see that same opportunity continuing for subsequent generations, given the current funding structure. Ohio public school students are being cheated out of a better education, and taxpayers are being cheated out of money designated to public schools but which now fund private school vouchers. Many of these private schools are religious, negating the separation of church and state with these vouchers paid for by myself and all the taxpayers in the state of Ohio. I believe Centerville should join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit because our state legislators are not following the Constitution they swore to uphold. Again, they are cheating students and taxpayers. They are making our state and communities worse off so that many people don't want to stay in the state of Ohio. And joining the lawsuit sends a message and supports the notion that cheating is not acceptable. I have read in the Dayton Daily News that vouchers are siphoning money away from public schools and into private schools, as you've heard, to the tune of nearly $1 billion this school year alone. Vouchers are funded at an unequal rate, with public schools funded at a lower rate per capita than with the voucher support. We know that public schools do not get to choose which students to accept. Private schools do. We know that public schools have mandated testing and mandated financial reporting. Not so with private schools. We know that public schools do not indoctrinate students into any type of religion or belief system, whereas many private schools do. How in the world did vouchers gain the foothold they have in our state when this method of funding is unconstitutional? I urge you to add Centerville schools to the list of school districts that have already joined the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. It is the right thing to do if we are going to curb this theft of funds from publicly-funded education and begin the work needed to constitutionally fund public schools. Thank you.
My name is Robin Butel. I'm a resident of Washington Township and a parent of two Centerville students. Over the years, I have spent many volunteer hours in our schools. I've gotten a firsthand glimpse, glimpse at the dedication of our amazing educators and some of the challenges our public schools face. I have gained insight into just how many services our schools provide to students and the community as a whole. This is why I'm angry and disappointed to see the state pour nearly $1 billion into private school vouchers while public schools, including Centerville, remain severely underfunded. Recent news around the next biennial state budget indicates that public school funding will only get worse. We have to speak out if we want change. I therefore encourage you to join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. To date, not 293 or 48% of Ohio school districts have committed. Centerville's participation would show the community that the district is advocating for students and taxpayers by taking a stand against the diversion of public money into private schools. This would be the first step to working towards fair and adequate funding. When discussing the lawsuit at last week's work session, several of you expressed a preference to defray the costs through private donations. I respect your desire to protect the general fund. However, according to the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding, none of the 293 districts that have contributed to the litigation effort has done so using private money. Would you consider making a commitment to join the lawsuit upon donations reaching a designated threshold in a specified timeframe? This would allow you to meet the joint goals of protecting the general fund and advocating for the funding that public schools need and deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Centerville School Board and the community. My name is Kate Vreiner, and I'm a resident of Centerville and a Centerville business owner. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our public schools and the impact that the state's voucher system is having on them, and asking you to join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. As you know, Ohio's voucher system is diverting vital resources from our public schools, and it's only getting worse. The state is once again proposing to take $650 million away from our school budgets, money that should be spent on our children's education. The reality is that vouchers are hurting our schools, siphoning a billion dollars away from our classrooms, and leaving public education stretched thin. Our schools are the backbone of our community. We have a responsibility to ensure that all children, regardless of their background or where they live, have access to strong equitable education. Public schools are where our children learn about different cultures, histories, and experiences, lessons that build empathy and understanding. We cannot allow these lessons to be sacrificed for convenience or to make life easier for some. As a parent, I understand that choices are necessary. My children attend a Catholic school, and that comes with sacrifices. But I refuse to sacrifice our public schools to make my life easier. Our public schools are the foundation of a thriving inclusive society. We cannot stand by as they are dismantled. This isn't just a Centerville issue. This is a statewide issue, and it's up to all of us, our local leaders, our school board, our state representatives, to push back against these damaging cuts. I want to thank Senator Blackshear for being here tonight and for his commitment to engaging with our community. We need your leadership now more than ever. Please join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit to help save our schools. Our children's futures are at stake. Our community is at stake. We have to stand together to protect the education system that serves all of our kids, and we must act now before it's too late. Thank you.
My name is Mike Larson. I'm a resident of Washington Township. I've had three children go through the, hello? Yeah, okay, thanks. I've had three children go through the school district. I would like to discourage the school board from enjoining the lawsuit against the state of Ohio to end Ed Choice's school voucher program. This program has allowed thousands of Ohio families to choose where to send their children to school. The voucher program has helped thousands of Ohio families to move their kids from state to fine failing schools, to private schools or charter schools that enable them to increase their chances of succeeding as adults in college or other vocations. I have heard the school board complain about the amount of funding parents receive from the state through school vouchers, and you've also shared your concern over the vouchers are more than what our school district receives per student from the state. However, I have never heard you mention the fact that when parents move their kids to a private school, the district no longer has the operating costs associated with those students. You also share concern that our school district receives a much lower percentage of state funding per student on average. If the school district receives such a small percentage of state funding, wouldn't help the school revenue if there were less students enrolled while tax revenue continues to come in? When parents move their children to a private school, they still pay local levy taxes. The latest Centerville school quality profile indicates only 13% of revenue comes from the state, while 77% comes from local taxpayers. I do not understand how the school voucher doesn't help Centerville schools with less operating costs while still receiving the majority of the income. Centerville School District is a quality school district. You will not see a mass exodus of students or revenue due to the school voucher program. Indeed, Centerville School District has seen a 3.5% increase in enrollment since the year 2000. If Centerville schools continue to provide quality education, parents will continue to choose to enroll their children here. However, there are many school districts in the state that are failing to educate their students. For example, on average, Ohio ACT scores have dropped 10% since 2005. Why would we support a lawsuit to take that choice away from parents whose local school districts are failing their students? 55% of Ohio residents support school choice for parents, while wholly 62% of Ohio parents support school choice. There is no risk of our school district losing state funding if local parents have a choice where to send their kids to school. In fact, the school district treasurer has indicated state funding is expected to remain the same under the new state funding model. There is a better place to invest $16,000 than in a Columbus law firm. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. As everybody knows, there's been a whirlwind of activity happening in our government, state and federal level, that brings with it a substantial amount of uncertainty. There is- There is a wealth of information available on various websites and the state website. I am not going to be able to cover all of the bills that have been introduced that impact education. I will try to go through a handful of them, but I am more than happy at any point to share my lists of things that I'm working on, that I'm following, or where I get my information. So you are more than welcome to reach out to me at any point. Last month, I did mention Senate Bill 1, which has the sister bill of House Bill 6, titled the Advance Higher Education Act. I will just let you all know that despite more than 800 testimonies given in opposition, that bill did pass through the state senate, has moved to the house. Our local representative, Tom Young, is the sponsor in the house and we are waiting to see when that will be scheduled for hearings. If you have strong feelings about that bill, now is the time to reach out to your legislator. Senate Bill 107 was introduced last week and has been discussed at various points over the last couple of years. This bill would fundamentally change school board elections, requiring that state and local school board members or candidates have to appear on the ballot with a party designation. School boards have traditionally been nonpartisan elections as the goal of educating our young people in public schools has traditionally been a common goal and has, you know, had an effort to remove politics from that and that is changing essentially. There are a few bills that are actually potentially beneficial in education that have been introduced in the house that address student health. One just talks about not allowing, districts have to make policies to not allow the purchase of imitation foods. House Bill 77 is a partnership between ODH, the Ohio Department of Health, and school districts where they have to develop educational materials for caregivers of elementary age students about the signs, especially early warning signs of type 1 diabetes and the management, the importance of comprehensive management. And then it requires the school districts to distribute that information to all elementary parents. Potentially could be beneficial in trying to increase recognition of early symptoms and signs of a serious illness before developing critical conditions such as DKA. Additionally, there are several bills in the house that are going to look at lots of parts of substance abuse and educating students about substance use. There are also a couple of bills that are being introduced in the house and the senate looking at school safety, enacting what's called Alyssa's Law. It involves wearable panic alert systems in the schools. The senate version is a little more stringent. It would require every district to implement such a system in the next school year. The house version creates a pilot grant program for schools to trial these to see. Next comes Senate Bill 34. This is called the Historical Educational Displays Act. This has had its first committee hearing the middle of February. It would require all school districts by July 1st of 2026 to display in each classroom one historical document from the list you can see here. And just that list. And it has some other pieces about you can create big displays and all kinds of things related to one of these documents. And so that seems to be moving forward. And then, as we've heard from our members of the public, there is a lot going on right now with school financing and this is probably the most important part of what's going on in the legislature as it relates to us. There have been a couple of bills introduced. Whether they go anywhere or not is yet to be seen. One in the house and senate that looks at trying to provide no-cost meals, breakfast and lunch to all students. And even going so far as to say that students who have a meal debt can't be punished by withholding food or ostracizing them and how we address those debts. There is also Senate Bill 3, which has been discussed at length, proposes lowering the state income tax to a flat 2.75% over the next two years, which would obviously impact the state's revenue. That would then go towards potentially school funding. One that's interesting that just was introduced last week or so is this combination of Senate Bill 93 and a senate joint resolution 4. Probably it will not ever see the light of day, but as we talk about the constitutionality of our school funding model, this particular senator has proposed a very drastic change to all school funding. So it creates this educational fund that is funded by a flat state property tax, single statewide property tax and an increased state sales tax. And that would then fund all schools, public, private, non-chartered, private. It would eliminate a school district's ability to levy property or income taxes and it would establish what the state says is the per pupil funding amount and that's what would be given to every school based on where the parent chooses to send their student. So I don't foresee that actually coming to pass, but it's interesting that they're bringing up all of these different changes. And then House Bill 96, which Laura and Mr. Wesley have talked about before, is the proposed biennial budget. This is what needs our attention right now. It is scheduled for hearings in the house tomorrow and Wednesday and in the senate on March 4th. We could potentially see a decrease in state funding. We've talked a little bit about the impact of vouchers. I'll leave it to Laura to discuss the actual specifics of how it will impact our district. But my ask at this point, and it comes from some of the leaders in state funding across the area, is to flood the state house, flood our legislators with our stories. And listening to a statewide webinar last week, the request was, there are a couple of school districts up in northwestern Ohio, northeastern Ohio that are challenging school districts to send the same number of letters that is equivalent to half of your average daily enrollment. So for us, that would be 4,000 letters. We're going to start with a $1,000 or a 1,000 letter goal. And it is, we are asking members of the community to take a moment to write a letter to your legislators and send it. We are trying to make this as easy as we can. There is a table back here that has envelopes, some stamps, address labels that are printed out and a recommended kind of format for letters to keep it personal, to keep it positive, to ask the state to support public education. And if you would like to write letters and email them, we are partnering with some of our local organizations to support that. We will collect them and mail them for you. But we do want our state legislators to hear from us. And so we are calling it Heard Up and Speak Out, 1,000 letters in 10 days. And if there are questions about that, I am happy to answer them. That's the end of my report. So right now, they are back there on the table and we will have them at Elks Connect on Wednesday night as well. And there are several of us who are willing to bring them to your home if you'd like.
Any reason why the student board rep is going to do a table if you're in Florida?
They are more than welcome and I can give you links. I also have templates for testimony. If you would like to submit either written testimony or you would like to sign up to provide verbal testimony at the state house, I can help get you the resources to do that as well.
Thank you. Just to add on, letters are great, but even better than that are phone calls. The studies show that the more calls they get, the more they respond and they act to it versus letters where they may just hide it away. So write, but call, call and call and call. Okay. Next, student board reps. I hear you have a thing tonight.
Hello, everybody. I'm Samaria Williams. I am a senior student board rep and here's our presentation. So section one is about our-
Hey Samaria, you can actually move the mic down. You don't stand on your toes.
Thank you, okay. Section one is about our roundtable meeting that we had on February 15th, about two weeks ago, in which we had some special guests. We had OSBA members Jennifer Hoag, Dr. Kathy McFarland, and Mary Cleveland come and dialogue with us. Our main topic was the release time for Religious Education Bill, which was passed in January, mid-January, I believe, and will go into effect, I believe, April of this year. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I believe school boards should be working on policy around that. And again, just to restate, some of our main issues that we all, the six or seven school districts represented, had were like how much time it takes from instruction, a busing schedule, lack of background check responsibility for either the third party or school districts. We aren't really clear on who should take most of the responsibility on that. As we were advised, like the more responsibility the school district takes, the more, a lot of, if things were to go wrong, it would fall back on us, which would not benefit us in the end. A lack of transparency with Board of Educations on the curriculum, on what's being taught to students, how long it's being taught to students, and a lack of clear accommodations for students with disabilities, physical or mental. There's been no communication about that. Some of the suggestions we've received was to place more of our focus on the time, the release time rather than the religious issue, which was something we all agreed with. We don't really have a problem with it being a specific religion. It's more of the time outside of school that we have an issue with. Look for some data to back up our concerns and to meet in person with lawmakers and possibly testify at a hearing perhaps. Some of our next steps were to stay updated with the OSBA bill tracker, which we have recently received. I believe there may be an OSBA presentation soon that we can sign up for and then find other bills or topics that we would like to focus on.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Mahir Kaider and I'm a junior on the board. I'll be talking about the Montgomery County Student Advisory Delegation. The delegation has people all over Montgomery County, students all over Montgomery County that aim to influence education in a positive way. And in efforts of doing so, the delegation will be visiting the Ohio State House on Tuesday, February 25th, tomorrow. And there are a few things that we're focusing on and there are three key main things. Their first, ensuring safe and inclusive schools for all students, expanding college and career access, and third and most importantly, accountability standards for all schools reserving, receiving public funds. So let's go a little bit more, let's go a little deeper into each one of these. The very first is the ensuring safety and inclusiveness for all students. As we saw today, there's a lot of legislation and a lot of uncertainty for what's about to happen. And to address that, we have to ensure that our schooling is, or the schools that we live in are safe and inclusive for all students so that we are able to nurture them to be better people. The second aspect that came up was expanding college and career access. We recognize how it is important for students to have accessibility to careers and colleges beyond just their education in high school and we advocate for opportunities beyond that. But third and most importantly, something that's extremely relevant to today, we heard Senator Blackshear talk about the Ed Choice Program, also known as the voucher program. We heard many members of the public as well comment on this. And this goes directly towards addressing this specific issue. And to address this funding model, after a long amount of discussion, analysis, and conversation, we came to a conclusion that the most pragmatic, most practical solution would be to establish equal opportunity standards for all schools, whether it may be private, public, or charter schools that receive public funding. They are held to the same standards. And this is something that we are most focused on, we are most advocating for. And can I explain more to that?
Yeah, so when we were discussing issues that we would like to talk with our representatives about, one of the big ones was the Ed Choice voucher that we currently have and how the funding has increased exponentially over the years. And let me clarify, none of us as students are against the voucher existing. What we are against is essentially the slow and trickling defunding of public education as most of us go to public schools. And we don't believe that children should go to like failing school districts. However, what can we do to prevent those school districts from failing? Well, obviously, we need funding. And in order to, essentially, the solution that we came up with was like, in order to receive these funds from the Ed voucher program, these schools should have to meet the same standards that public schools have to meet. So they have to, say if they have third grade students, they must be taking like the third grade reading state tests that we all have to take or the eighth grade math state test that we all have to take or the same high school state test that we all have to take here at Centerville, West Carrollton, Miamisburg, Northmont, wherever it be, in order to make it fair for them to receive these funds.
Hi, my name is Titus Lee. I'm a junior on the board and I'm going to be rounding out the report tonight. I'm just here to talk about the candy comments that we had earlier this month. Candy and Commons is a monthly activity that we hold here at the high school where we bribe typically freshmen with candy and they give us their comments and their feedback on issues that they see around the school and basically we're just the feet on the ground just to give you some feedback about things that students are feeling. First off, we heard a variety of things. It was a great turnout, but some key issues that kept popping up, one that we saw where students were unhappy with the disciplinary system. Some students cited that they saw other peers get more lenient punishments for the same offenses than they did and they thought that that wasn't fair. They see that our policies have a very subjective interpretation and they thought that that was an issue. Students obviously have a problem with the phone policy. They don't like that. We are aware that that's not much that you can change, but we just thought it'd be helpful to know that that's what students are feeling. Many students had issues with the tardy and hall pass policy. They are unhappy with it. And as always, students were unhappy with the dress code. They wish that there would be revisions so they can have more freedom of expression. Another thing that students brought up were teacher biases, which tie back into my previous point and that the discipline system is based off reputation and that they feel like they're being treated unfairly. And we also learned that students love to take more than one piece of candy from the bowl, even though they're instructed to take one. And that's about it for the candy comments this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done, very well done. Next, treasurer and superintendent update. You can go get it if you need. That's, that's what they talked about.
Okay, good evening. We're back. So in case you were wondering, the duo was back here a little bit. So tonight, we heard a lot of comments from some of our staff. Mr. Tarpe specifically talked a lot about our mission statement and our strategic plan. And so I think it's just important to kind of go back and review some things. First of all, our mission continues and I think that's important to share with everyone here tonight. I think it's important to keep in the forefront of our minds our mission and the vision of our students. We want to empower and continue to challenge and support all learners to help them grow every day. As a district, we must create collaborative learning environment that responds to the needs of each learner, fosters growth and prepares individuals to be responsible members of society. And that's all captured in our mission and vision. Tonight, I want to share a little bit about our five focus areas. I'm not going to go through each of those focus areas individually. I think everyone knows we have five focus areas. Obviously, teaching and learning, in which we are supporting the growth of the whole learner, which is important for the overall growth for our students. Leading and innovating, diversifying and including, which means incorporating all voices that encompass our diverse community to strengthen every aspect of our mission. Another focus area is communicating and understanding and tonight, Laura and I are going to focus on resourcing and supporting, providing those support structures necessary to sustain and maximize our growth and actually provide a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students. And so again, I just want to kind of focus on a few of those things as we move forward and those are the things that we're going to talk about here this evening. So first, looking at resourcing and supporting. Over the last several weeks, I keep hearing from our state representatives and even today during a statewide webinar with the Ohio School Boards Association that several legislatures are saying public school districts are spending too much money, have too many administrators, they're overstaffed and have high carryover balances. So the following information is not new, but is an information that is important to continue to remind our community about Centerville City Schools. We have cut spending. We have cut staff. Forty-eight staff have been reduced throughout this last levy campaign going into- levy campaign going into this school year. That's a total of 65 total staff members that have been reduced from our budget since 2019. For administrators, I think it's important to keep sharing that the ratio between Centerville City School administrators to student ratio, our Centerville City School administrators is 209 students to one administrator. Similar districts is 161 to one, and the state average is 117 to one administrators. Student and teacher ratios, again, is important to share, it continues to far exceed similar districts. We are evaluating all district needs, and we will have to look at bringing back some of the positions that we have cut as we move forward. And we're taking a cautious look at some of those positions and making sure that those positions are the right fit for us as a district. And for the carryover balance, we have shared this slide numerous times, we have the lowest percentage in Montgomery County as far as the average, or the percentage of carryover balance with the school districts, and well below, or far below, the state average. So as you can see, we're not like just any other public school district. And I almost forgot, we have a pretty good academic program as well that does a great job of providing the services that we need for our students. So the projected state budget is really what we're here to talk about tonight, and significant impacts could really impact our district in that current budget, and Laura's here to talk more about the budget as we move forward.
Thank you, and good evening. As we talked about last month, we are knee-deep into the biennial budget process. The governor's budget was released earlier this month, and that quickly became House Bill 96, which is the state budget bill for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. And just to remind everybody, we are far, we are far from the end of the budget process. And so, after House Bill 96 is settled, it will go to the Senate. The Senate will come out with their version of a budget bill, and a conference committee will come together, and we hopefully will have a settled budget by June 30th. And so again, the information that I'm sharing tonight is only solely based on the governor's proposal. It is, it is not law, it's not in effect, but it's where we are today. I also want to tell you that I've received two sets of simulated numbers since the governor's proposal was introduced, and they're different. And they're different for various reasons, and I'm going to explain a little bit of that here in a minute. So some of the key pieces to House Bill 96 that is important for schools is the continued phase in of the Fair School Funding Plan. We've had a lot of conversations about the plan over the years, we're on a guarantee. When I take the Centerville hat off and I put public education hat on, the plan is a good attempt to fund schools. It's not there yet, it needs to be fully phased in, it needs to have updated cost inputs, which is the second point there. The inputs are frozen in the governor's proposal at fiscal year '22 levels. And so when you think about that for a minute, we're talking about the fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 budget, funding that at fiscal year '22 levels. So, that's problematic. There's never a catch-up if we're not funding according to what our, what current costs are. So, so that is, that is a piece that the state organizations, that we, as we talk to the legislators, need to be talking about, is that that needs to be funded at more current, current levels. And then the third point about the budget bill that is a concern definitely for Centerville is reduce the funding guarantees for certain districts. The temporary transitional aid guarantee is one of the guarantees that they're talking about, that is our guarantee. That is the amount that says we will receive the same amount that we received in the prior year. They're talking about funding that at 95% in fiscal year '26 instead of 100%, and then 90% in fiscal year '27. And so, I think the governor's proposal is a kind of a slow erosion of the funding guarantee. I don't know how they're coming up with the numbers, the simulated numbers I have is just a total, they don't show it in components, but the information that was actually just released this morning shows a reduction of $65,000 in fiscal year '26 for Centerville City Schools, and then an additional $25,000 in fiscal year '27. We'll see where that goes with, with different versions of the bill as it goes through the legislative process and what happens. I think the total state impact is an important piece here. It's a $31 million funding cut to public education in fiscal year '26, and an additional $40 million in fiscal year '27. So, because of the guarantees, because of freezing those inputs, that, that, that are, those are the simulations that are out there right now. And again, that was just released this morning. Dr. Graff did a great job talking about a lot of the proposed legislation, and so this next section is very short because you pretty much hit on everything which was, which was great. I wanted to just mention two additional pieces of proposed legislation. One is Senate Bill 66 that will change the millage calculations for the floor. We've talked about the 20 mil floor, you've heard of the 20 mil floor in the past, we're above the 20 mil floor. This piece of legislation won't really impact Centerville schools. House Bill 28 eliminates any authority that we would have for replacement property tax levies. We don't do that kind of levy either. So again, these, these aren't pieces that really impact us, but I, I am sensing sweeping changes to the property tax system, and that does impact public education in general. It impacts the state funding model. Everything you do to, on either side, whether it's state funding or whether it's property taxes, those two systems are, are commingled. And so when, when we, when we change one, we're potentially having unintended consequences to the other. And so these are some of the bills that we're, that we are watching. I also think it's important to talk a little bit about our federal funding. We've heard national news that there's, that the U.S. Department of Education may possibly be eliminated. We currently receive $3.3 million in federal funding. This is for some of our neediest students, it's, it's reading intervention programs, it's special education services, and a few other miscellaneous, small miscellaneous things, but the majority of it is for Title I reading and for special education. That funding currently pays for, either in full or in part, for 42 of our staff members. So, I don't know what, I just think that it just leaves a little bit of an unknown hanging out there as to what, what becomes of that money. I mean, they, they talked about that it would just flow through the state and let the state decide that. I don't think there's any guarantees that that's going to flow in, in the dollars that we're getting today, if the U.S. Department of Education goes away. So I just, that's something that we're watching and paying close attention to, because the decision there would be, we, we pull that into the general fund, if that funding were to go away, we pull that into the general fund and we continue those services, or we decide to make reductions. So, that's where we would be at that point in time. That is not a piece that you see on the five-year forecast, we don't talk about that when we talk about the general fund, it's not the general fund. That is a separate piece of funding that we're required to account for that separately. But it, but it is very much a part of our everyday programming and services to students. Oh, I'm going to ask Tammy to do that. Yes. to go down. If it's not 100% guarantee, it's less money for us. So again, how the final numbers end up coming out by the end of this whole process, if they keep that language in there, then I believe we will see less funding next year.
Okay, so, so on your slide it had, it will decrease for certain districts. We're not sure that we'll be part of it, but we could be. I mean, newspapers, I think today or yesterday, pointed out that Centerville, I think, and Beaver Creek are two districts that were not going to be affected by the reduction...
So the first set of numbers that came out actually showed us with a slight increase. That's because they add in some of those categorical funding categories, like special education transportation, for example, some of the reimbursements and things that we receive for those. The numbers that came out today, they stripped those things away, so I believe the decrease that we're seeing is due to the guarantee going down. And again, I, I'm only getting totals, I'm not seeing the actual components of the funding to know for sure base funding, and, and there's, there's money for special education and gifted and English learners, and there's all sorts of categories of funding, and then the guarantee at the bottom. I haven't seen any breakdown yet to know for sure that it's the guarantee, but I believe that it is.
Yeah, so more than likely, we will see a decrease of 5-10% over the next couple of years.
If it's, if that language stays in the budget bill, yes. But again, there's, it's got to get through the House and then get through the Senate as well.
Right, things like that tend not to go up, they tend to go down. True. And then on top of that, we're talking about that 3.3 million is going to shift it over, that's another, in essence, reduction for us.
If that happens.
If it happens.
If that happens.
Right.
And again, it just creates uncertainty when we talk about planning from one year to the next, not knowing what might happen to that funding, or what level it might be at, if it's, if it's the state that's controlling that, we just don't know what, how that will look.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, your questions pretty much wrap up my, my presentation, so I, that's great. So no, I think it's important just to kind of emphasize some of the funding challenges. You know, we've, as a district, we've looked at our expenditures, you know, we passed the levy in November, we felt like if funding models would stay consistent, what they have been over the last few years, we could really expand our operation costs out for five to six years, really lean more towards six years. So any type of reduction to state funding or the federal grants obviously puts that in jeopardy or at risk. The other thing I think we have to keep in mind, as a district, we talk a lot about our facilities, our facilities are aging, is one of the reasons why we're having our Elks Connect at the various building locations throughout the district. You know, there's a slide we present and we share a lot of times, that PVS is the youngest, and Magzic is a 101 is the oldest, but the scary part is, is that the average, there's 11 buildings in the middle, are all about the same age of about 60 years old. And so, at some point, as a community, we have to address the fact that we will have to make some changes and look at how to improve our facilities. Policy changes tonight, we talked about time and resources a little bit, there's 42 revised, new, or changed, amended policies that I'm asking the board to approve. Just so you know, there's another large batch of over 40 more that are coming our way in March. And so, again, it kind of goes back to some of those unfunded mandates, just some more additional policy changes that have to be put in place for the district. Elks Connect, I have to obviously put a shout out, you know, our goal is to continue, to continue with community engagement and reaching out to our community, talking about the district. We'll have our next Elks Connect this week, on Wednesday, at Normandy Elementary. It's an opportunity to tour that building, have a discussion on staffing, and obviously open up with the time for, for questions and answers from the community. Our next event will be at Watts on April 23rd, and that'll be at 6:30 at both times in both of those locations. And I can't help but mention, it was mentioned earlier, this is the week to celebrate public schools, and so it's a great week to reach out and think about public education the way it is. I know tonight, earlier, Mindy Klein was here, I want to send a thank you to her last week for giving us the opportunity to be at her building, to move our work session. It was a lot of work on her part, she did a great job with the kids and the students. So I just want to say special thanks to her for getting that organized and put in place for us. And so, with that being said, that is our report, unless there's any further questions from the board.
I had one other question. Going back to Laura's part at the beginning, I think it was Laura's part, talking about cash as a percentage of expenses, I know we talked about this some during the levy campaign. When we talk about our budget, and community members hear our budget, we're talking about large sums of money. What does that translate to? We see it as a percentage of expenses, are cash on hand that we carry over equals how many actual days' worth of expenses, on average?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's, it's like a quarter of the school year.
Okay.
Or a third of the school year.
So even though the dollar amount to, to you or I, thinking about our home budget sounds astronomical.
Yes.
It is not extravagant by any stretch of the imagination. It allows us to function while we're waiting for collections and state funding to come in, and property tax revenue to be passed through to us and things like that, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much. Student Services, Special Ed.
So tonight, I just want to talk to you a little bit, we, last week, we had a discussion in executive session, you were going to be asked in a little bit, under the superintendent recommendations, to act on Item 5, which is actually in regards to a student. It's just a reminder that this was extensively discussed in executive session, we cannot discuss it in a public forum, because that would go against the Family Educational Rights Act, which is a federal law which prohibits us from sharing any information about this. So, just a reminder, if you have general questions, I can try and answer them right now, but hopefully we got all of them answered last week.
Good.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the Brief Business Projects Report?
It's as brief as you want it to be. So last week, there were some questions about the turf project at Magzic at Legacy Field that's used for boys and girls soccer, boys and girls lacrosse, Magzic, their PE as well as their lunch, as well as rentals. And so just a couple of those questions that were, that were brought up last week, the amount of money that the athletic department receives through rentals. So currently, right now, this, this could obviously change, this is, and this is also before any of the costs that they might have as part of that. You know, some people could, could add, some people could, you know, take their, make their decision not to be part. But right now, the, the athletic department will be bringing in about $75,000 is the amount in rental fees, and that is for Magzic as well as for the turf field at the Heisman, as both of those field. The other question was, was about the shock pad, which is about a $105,000 cost. I, I shared a couple of different articles with you, I've had additional conversations with business managers in the area, as well as a representative from the Moats Group. They're pretty much 50/50. I, I, I shared one positive and one negative with you, and I found about 10 articles, five were, five were for, five were against. But, we've had a safe field... But we've had a safe field for 10 years. It has met the expended lifespan. You redo a field for a couple of different reasons. That GMAX rating that I mentioned last week, the amount of pellets, that's one of the reasons why we're at where we're at currently. You do that because the field integrity itself, that's one of the reasons where we're at, and as well as seams. The Moats Group will guarantee that GMAX rating for that 10-year lifespan. The shock pad does add a 25-year that will last for, you know, this replacement and the next replacement. But again, we've had a safe field for 10 years and will continue to have a safe field guaranteed by Moats without that shock pad.
And that shock pad is going to add an extra how much to the budget?
$105,000.
Okay.
It adds, I'm sorry, I don't follow. It adds a 25-year guarantee? It adds 25-year what?
Just that shock pad has a 25, not that turf.
For the GMAX rating, which is the cushion, it guarantees that for 25 years. It doesn't mean the field, it doesn't mean the field itself will last for 25 years, but just the shock protection will last for 25 years.
So if we move forward with the shock pad, the next field turf replacement would just replace that top portion, not the shock pad?
You would not have to replace the shock pad the next replacement, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Technology Department update.
Good evening. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I'll make this quick and do you a favor. We're going to scratch the resolution for the Chromebooks on the agenda for tonight. I've been working on collecting quotes for our, you know, batch Chromebooks that are part of our normal cycle. Received word on Friday, that was the deadline for those quotes to come in, and in working with the vendors in preparation for tonight, got word that over the weekend, HP, the manufacturer of the device that we had specked out, is increasing the cost of the device and will no longer honor the quote that they provided us as part of this process. And so those increases are related to increase in tariffs. And so we're going to scrap that round of quotes, and we're going to go back to another manufacturer, and we're going to try to, you know, recollect quotes, and I'll be back here in March asking you to approve a resolution. I would expect, I'm hoping, that the cost and the project will come in close to the number that was on that proposed resolution, and we can find a way to not spend that extra 10% to 15% that is going to be attributed to the increase in costs that just went in over the weekend. So.
What was the dollar amount roughly on that increase?
It was a 10% increase across.
Dollars. I mean, how much dollars?
So 40, about $40,000.
Another $40,000.
$400,000 per.
These are student Chromebooks?
These are, this is the batch of student Chromebooks that we use. We replace the second grade students and the seventh grade students, and that is part of our standard cycle. So we're going to scrap, we're going to scrap all that tonight, and I'll be back again in March.
What's our board tariff?
I'm going to work hard to get our costs down. I'm going to try to find the right device that meets our specs and hopefully won't impact us with another 10% to 15%. So.
And those tariffs came from the federal government. That would have now cost us an extra $40,000. The answer is yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll see you.
Just want to make sure that people know where that increase is coming from. All right. Next, Treasurer's Recommendations. Consider approving the January 25 financial statements for the monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then a now purchase orders approved by administration certified by the treasurer and supported by the board resolution totaling $8,765. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of following Board of Education meetings, January 27th and February 18th, regular and work session.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving transfers to the general fund in the amounts listed and from the funds listed below. These transfers are being recommended to clear out inactive funds in preparation for the financial software mitigation that is occurring 7/1/25. Special trust for $414.21, rotary $148,409.25, public pupil support $5,205, other grants Student managed student activity $144,065.81. District managed student activities $704.18. A motion, please?
Second.
Now, when people see this, these are inactive funds. You can explain this a little bit. This is not money that is school, school money. This is not taxpayer dollars. This is not our money. This is money that's been in there, that is just sitting there from these organizations and grants that have nothing to do with us or your taxpayer dollars. So when you look at this, I don't want you to go away thinking, oh, look at all this money they've got in these inactive funds they've been wasting. This is not our money.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Clubs and classes and fundraisers.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving transfers from the general fund to the amounts listed and to the funds listed below. These transfers are being recommended to clear out inactive funds in preparation for the financial software mitigation that is occurring 7/1/25. Fund Improvement Fund $285,608.91. Public Pupil Support $10,735.46. Student Managed Student Activity $5,205. And District Managed Student Activity $749.61. A motion?
Second.
And.
These are.
You want to?
Yes. So Item 3, not this one, but the one prior, cleared those old inactive funds out of those funds and put them into the general fund. That's Ohio Vice Code. Can only transfer into the general fund. This particular motion is taken then from the general fund and moving it to accounts that closely, very closely related within the same building, same purposes, or that meet the definition of what those funds were. So it's moving it versus specified projects and things of that nature.
So that money now will go into the general fund, which will help us?
From the general, no.
Help.
From the general funds to do?
Into those other funds.
Other funds.
Yes.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Superintendent's Recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting the resignation is listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel, listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments, and recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving a farm lease between Centerville City Schools and Lucas Brothers Farms for Social Row and Franklin Street Properties. Motion, please?
So moved.
This is a thing we do every single year. They take care of the land. It saves us some extra money also that they will pay us to do some of the farming, and it covers the cost of the care of the property. It is a yearly thing we vote on. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving a resolution for the procurement and installation of the athletic turf at Legacy Field from the Moats, you say, Moats?
Moats Group.
Moats Group through participation in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, not to exceed $678,557.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving a resolution for the procurement and installation of the athletic turf at Legacy Field from the Moats, you say, Moats?
Moats Group.
Moats Group through participation in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, not to exceed $678,557.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Yep.
This dollar amount, this includes the shock?
No. This is without the shock pad.
This is with.
That included the shock pad.
This is with the shock pad.
It's not to exceed that number, so it will be less than $5,000, less than that.
So we are not moving forward with the shock pad. Okay. Thank you.
So if it's 5149 maybe, but 50/50?
Something like that.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving a settlement agreement, release, and waiver in Ohio Department of Education case SE 2404, 244204, 2404, and authorize the superintendent and treasurer to execute said agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider authorizing continued membership in the Ohio Athletic Association for the 25-26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Need to say anything? No. Okay.
It's an annual agreement we have with OHSAA. I think there was a question last week about membership. I think I answered that question. There is membership fees based upon the number of teams that we have at the high school. That money will come back if our teams are successful in district tournament. So for example, football made it regionals, I think it was about $3,000 that we got back from OHSAA. So most of the time, we get a lot of that money back.
Great. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?